A meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Tomo will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Legislatively, just as I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First, the news on the tax rate. The bills were being mailed today, so people should get them over the next couple of days. The final rate was eighteen twenty-three, which is an increase of sixteen cents on the base of eighteen oh seven. So that is a less than a one percent increase. We previously had talked about the, an estimate of less than two percent, but now it came in less than one percent. That is the lowest rate of increase in about fifteen years. And I want to thank you all on the Board of Aldermen for all your help with the budget, watching the money. This is clearly a group effort, but this should be good news for our resident taxpayers. Next, I wanted to mention the holiday stroll, which I know many of you attended. It was, again, a big success, thousands and thousands of people. You could see that everybody was having a good time. There was a lot of comment about it online and just a great night. And we want to, that was the twenty-eighth, I believe, so we want to, of course, continue this tradition well into the future. And we are thinking about trying to revive a summer stroll that we used to hold. I know Alderman Senate spoke to me about that before, having attended that when he was a teenager. And so Liz Hanem is working on that, and we're hoping to potentially do that next year, and we'll keep you advised. Finally, I wanted to wish condolences to the family of Jessica Wyman, who is a former, now retired firefighter, retired about two years. She died of a work-related condition and a very sad passing. I know the chief, Chief Buxton is here, and he, of course, feels very badly about it. And she was a member of the firefighters in the Nashua family, so condolences to her family and all who, you know, survived her. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to your remarks, Mayor. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too give condolences to Ms. Wyman's family. That, you know, it's tough to, to lose somebody in the community, you know, at any time, especially someone that's young. And the downtown stroll, I just want to thank everybody at Great American Downtown, Paul Shea and his whole team. You know, Paul being put back on there just three weeks ago and having to go and get that all organized and pick up the pieces was awesome. It was a great event. Me and Dan were loving it as we were walking down the street. And, you know, it was awesome. And I think everybody did a great job, and it was good to see some of you guys there and all the people of Nashua, and I just wanted to thank them.
What's that? Recognition period.
None.
Presentation.
Ceiling Smiles Dental Initiative.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I asked President Wiltshire if I could introduce this, the person who is going to be doing the Ceiling Smiles Dental Initiative. For full disclosure, she is my next-door neighbor. She's only been there for a couple of years now, but I've been quite impressed. She is known through the schools as the Tooth Fairy. She does not have the costume on today, it's a little cool, she said. She's also been three years, she is no longer the president, but she, for three years, served as the New Hampshire Dental Hygienist President. And I'd like to introduce Myra Nikitas. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Trish, thank you. Thank you all very much for having me tonight. I wanted to talk to you all about this important dental initiative that's taking place here in the Nashua School District. Trish asked me to kind of speak to you guys, and I think it's very important that we are all on the same page, and your support is very important in the success of this program. I've been a hygienist for about twenty years, and I was in private practice for about fifteen years, and I was on the board for the Dental Connection for a few years, and then I took a full-time position as their hygienist. And I went back to school, got my certification as a public health hygienist. Being a public health hygienist, I know that, you know, I can work in schools, nursing homes, anywhere that there's a need in a public aspect. So my heart is with the kids. So this program came to me, Ceiling Smiles Across New Hampshire, because I'm not sure if you all know, but the Oral Health Program for the state of New Hampshire conducted a kind of a screenings for third-grade students throughout the state in New Hampshire. And Nashua unfortunately came back as having the highest need and the highest prevalence of dental decay. So that, to me, was like a shot in my heart because I'm very passionate about what I do. I live in Nashua, and I'm a hygienist, and I dress up as the Tooth Fairy, promote oral health to kids, and go and present, and give toothbrushes out. And so when I heard this news, I'm like, we've got to do more. As a clinician, working at the Dental Connection, you know, I definitely saw the need as well. So having this program being offered for the school district was very important, I'm very excited. When I was asked to take part of this opportunity, I, hands down, said absolutely. So Ceiling Smiles Across New Hampshire is a cavity prevention program taking place in all the Nashua schools, so all the elementary schools and middle schools. Children from the ages of kindergarten through eighth grade will be able to receive preventative services such as a dental screening, fluoride application, silver diamine fluoride, which is a cavity-stopping material, dental sealants, and protective restorations, which also is fluoride-releasing, and a goodie bag to go home and continue healthy habits at home, as well as the oral hygiene instruction. So, so far now, we have just completed Dr. Crisp's school, just as of yesterday. So we sent out about thirty, three hundred, sorry, three hundred consent forms. We got back about eighty-two. Now those eighty-two, in one week, I've treated, sealed, screened eighty-two students. So there's, there's a huge need within our community. And with your support, you know, I'm grateful to be a part of this. My hope is that this will continue throughout areas in the state of New Hampshire. Nashua is kind of the, fortunate to kind of be the pilot of this program, to see how we can kind of move it across to other areas and other schools in the state. So we've got a lot of ground to cover. It's myself and a dental assistant who is fluent in Spanish. A lot of the kids that we're seeing in the community are Spanish-speaking. I took a lot to really try to break the barriers for our kids within the community. So the, the languages as well were considered. We translated the paperwork that got sent home to these families into five different languages, so that parents can, can read it and understand what's being offered for their child at school. So the mission is to really, you know, cut the barriers associated with dental care, cost, transportation, you know, maybe a parent can't leave work, maybe, you know, for whatever reason. So my hope and my passion is to, you know, really continue this mission and, geez, I think that's it, I think that's all I had to cover. Oh, and, you know, the program, the funding, right, the big part, the funding is being offered by the Oral Health Program and the CDC. We receive funding from them to be able to, to offer these kids these services. So not only is it offered to kids who have Medicaid or no dental insurance, but it's offered to kids that have private insurance, or everybody's eligible for this initiative. Silver Health is also my fiscal agent, so they're overseeing this project, you know, as well, and the support. So Silver Health is a mobile entity that brings health care everywhere to, to everyone. They, they were a big part in the adult Medicaid bill and offering services. They go to various communities. In New Hampshire, kind of dental deserts, so to speak, where the care is needed. So they've been a big, big help with this project as well, and so that's, that's that. I thank you all for all that you do for the community, and I'm hopeful that with your support, hopefully we can, you know, have this be sustainable and continue this for our youth, because it's very important. The one thing that I say to these kids when I'm dressed up as the Tooth Fairy is, you know, if we don't have a healthy mouth, is the rest of our body going to be healthy? So, you know, that, these healthy habits need to start at a young age. And unfortunately, it's not always their fault for these barriers. So, yeah, Stacy Hines has been a great, working with her, with the communications part of it, getting the robo-call sent out for the consent forms to get returned, working very well with the school district staff and support, just all around. It's been, it's been wonderful. And working with the connection, I was a familiar face, because I would be the ones picking up the kids and transporting them back to the clinic for services. So when I was asked to be a part of this project, you know, I was a familiar face, and the kids knew me as the Tooth Fairy without my wings, but, so thank you all for all that you do for our community, and I'm looking forward to being this, you know, a success for everybody. So thank you all. Any questions?
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things I just wanted to clarify is that previously you would transport the children, but this is actually done at the school?
Yes.
And you've done, Dr. Crisp, and the school you're at now is?
Is that Mount Pleasant?
Is Mount Pleasant.
Yes, so we transport everything. We have a mobile dental chair. We have all, you know, we have a huge toolbox about the height of me with, just stacked with our supplies. Everything is disposable, nothing is biohazard, there's no sharps. The trash that we, we have our own trash can, so any, you know, two-by-twos, bibs, anything that we've used, we pack that up and take it and dispose of it at our own place for, you know, trash. So we don't want to be a burden to, really, anybody in the school. We don't want the janitor to have to pick up after us. We don't, you know, this is a service that we're, we're there for these kids. We set up shop, and, you know, we, every fifteen to twenty minutes, we get another student that comes down. So within six days, eighty-two kids is phenomenal in my eyes, so I am grateful. We're just started today at Mount Pleasant, so my next stop is Amherst Street School, and then we're going to just continue on. So it's not only the title on schools, it's all the elementary schools and the three middle schools as well. So we were granted a space to rent as well, to help house all of our supplies with the youth council. And with the generosity of Representative Dotsey, she paid our rent for the year. So we're grateful to have that space and office space and right off of Northeastern Boulevard, just to have a secure place to, you know, have all of our supplies and stuck as stuff, because as you can, you know, see, this is over five thousand students, it's a lot of material to store. So we have our own printer, our own computers, we have our own ink, we're like our own shop. So thank you all. Any other questions?
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. I know we met last month.
Yes, thank you.
We talked about it in detail. It's a great thing that you're doing for the kids in the schools. And a lot of people don't realize that oral health has such an impact on whole health from preventing heart disease and other aspects. And it is disheartening to learn that Nashua had such a high need, the highest need that is getting this, you know, grant to have your services, but we're happy that you're here.
Thank you.
And, you know, in general, maybe this is the impact of removing fluoride from our water, and now you're seeing the long-term effects of that.
Yeah, I agree. I, you know, I didn't know this fact, but just a food for thought. The number-one reason why a child will miss school is a toothache. So we weren't even set up yet at Mount Pleasant, and I had a teacher bring down a student with a toothache. And sure enough, you know, she had a broken tooth. We were able to put some cavity-stopping material in her tooth, put a temporary filling on that tooth, and she was a new woman. She was smiling, she was happy, there's no drills, there's no aerosol, you know, it's a win-win. I can't even tell you, kids coming to see us, they may be a little anxious, oh, I hate the dentist, but then, you know, we have Christmas music playing, we're jolly selves, and really, all kids, we haven't had one kid that, you know, walked out that door and wasn't smiling. So, you know, if I can ease some kids' anxiety in just a little bit, to have them continue with care at a dental office or dental home, then, you know, I did my job. Every time I see a child, I print out a, a letter to go home to the parent or guardian that says the services that we completed today and my recommendation, whether it be to continue with routine care. The screening that I do obviously doesn't take place of a dental exam, they're encouraged to continue that. But if they need a dental home, I have a list of providers that I can give that child to bring home to their parent or guardian, so that they can continue care and make an appointment with somebody that, you know, will take their insurance, or take new patients, or whatever. I think the biggest consensus was cost and not having a dental home, that I've seen consent forms come back. So it's nice to kind of offer this care. So thank you all very much.
It's very important work that you do, keep it up. Thank you so much for doing it.
Thank you.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of November fourteenth, 2023, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from John L. Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding purchase two F-250 four-wheel-drive pickup trucks.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one person signed up, Bobby Badley.
Good evening, Bobby Badley, Chief Public Health Official and Director for the City of Nashua, Division of Public Health and Community Services. And I first want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to our legal department, our automatic liaison, and to President Laurie Rocha for allowing this item to be on the agenda. This item is Resolution 23183, and it is a legislation that was approved by the Board of Aldermen. Then I received a call from the state that there was a change in the funding amount, and so this is being brought back to you this evening to have this resolution amended and redone. And the gratitude is because they wanted this to be heard at the Governors and Council next week. The funding stream does start in January, and so this allows for us to not have any gaps in reimbursement in our services. And it covers a multi-year funding that we have through our Infectious Disease Control Program out of Community Health, which includes our immunization, STD prevention, HIV prevention, tuberculosis, lead poisoning convention, prevention, and then an additional $10,000 that we got for our immunization program for COVID-19 response. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from C. George Bauer, PhD, Chairman of Penachuck Corporation, regarding special meeting of the sole shareholder, December fifteenth, 2023, notice of special meeting of sole shareholder, proxy statement, proxy card.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the committee elect Brian Law to the Penachuck Corporation Board of Directors as a Class A Director to fill the vacancy resulting from the position previously held by Preston Stanley, and to authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card. Did I do something wrong?
No, he was just saying that we don't need the word "recommend."
Okay. I'll strike that for my motion.
Thank you.
The vote of the sole shareholders to the Board of Directors of Penachuck Corporation by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Conway Office in Xerox.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the Conway sixty-month lease renewal replacement for three copier leases for community health, welfare, and administrative services, with Conway Office and Xerox in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand four hundred thirty-four, that's three hundred and thirty, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety cents a month. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance Fund, a five-four-eight-two-eight copier lease slash general fund.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding prosecutor software Carpool Solutions.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and award a three-year contract for case management systems prosecutor software with Carpool Solutions in the amount of sixty-nine thousand twenty-five dollars, of which fifty-eight thousand nine hundred licensing install training, and ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars annual support services. Funding will be through Department 150 Police Department Fund, five-five-six-two-zero software subscription.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award New Era Technology.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and award a contract for new firewall devices and subscription services for five years, with the New Era Technologies in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology Fund, five-five-six-nine-nine, other contracted services slash risk internal services.
You've heard that motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Consolidated Communications, Inc.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and award a five-year contract for the remaining phone POTS lines and internet services with Consolidated Communication Incorporated. In the amount of sixty-one thousand per year, funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology Fund, five-five-one-zero-nine telecommunications telephone voice slash general fund, fifty-one thousand, five-five-one-zero-five data internet slash general fund, ten thousand.
You've heard the motion, I just want to say POTS lines are actually plain old telephone service. That's what that stands for, because I have one of those lines in my office. So you've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director, regarding memorandum seeking approval of Bill Berry to replace Tracy Hall on 201 Main Street Real Estate Corp.
There being no objection, I'll refer this appointment to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Paul Dechenay's, reappointment term to expire October thirteenth, 2028, 57 Tyler Street, Apartment 710, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. James Tolner, reappointment term to expire October fourteenth, 2026, One Sequoia Circle, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063. Eric R. Wilson, reappointment term to expire October fourteenth, 2027, 60 Indian Rock Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications. The appointments by the mayor is read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a new appointment that was submitted after the agenda was prepared.
The Housing Trust Fund Committee, Yav Freezy-Castillo, term to expire December twelfth, 2026, 23 Dexter Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060.
Without objection, I will assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. Budget Review Committee, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the November ninth, 2023 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-23-169 relative to the acceptance of ninety thousand from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance into police grant activity fiscal year 2024 hazardous device unit response vehicle.
Alderman Lopez.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to accept, or make a motion for final passage of R-23169.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23169 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-170 relative to the acceptance of forty-three thousand one hundred and seventeen from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity 2023 justice assistance grant multi-jurisdictional.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for final passage of R-23170.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23170 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-173 relative to the acceptance of seventeen thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents from the United States Department of Homeland Security and the New Hampshire Department of Safety into emergency management grant activity 2023 building resilient infrastructure in communities BRIC program.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-173.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23173 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-174 relative to the acceptance of sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars from the United States Department of Homeland Security and the New Hampshire Department of Safety into fire department grant activity 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program Ballistic Warm Zone Vess.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-174.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Resolution 23174 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-175 relative to the acceptance of one hundred and forty-two thousand from the United States Department of Homeland Security and the New Hampshire Department of Safety into fire department grant activity 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program Quick Response Utility Vehicles.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of R dash twenty-three dash one seventy-five.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-three one seventy-five is declared duly adopted. New unfinished business ordinances.
None.
New business resolutions.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one seventy-eight relative to the supplemental appropriation of seven thousand four hundred of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four Unanticipated Revenue into Fund Number twenty-five zero-seven Fire Training Facility Rental Fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one seventy-nine relative to the acceptance of fifty-eight thousand from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity two thousand and twenty-four Violence Against Women Grant Program and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one eighty relative to the supplemental appropriation of one million fifteen thousand of assigned fund balance into capital project activity hunt building repairs and improvements.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one eighty-one relative to the acceptance and appropriation of four hundred and eighty-five thousand from the United States Department of the Interior National Park Service Save America's Treasures Grant Program into capital project activity hunt building repairs and improvements.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Human Affairs Committee, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one eighty-two authorizing the sale of tax needed property located at seventeen Jackson Street and Elbridge Street to Liberty Utilities.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, sorry.
Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Planning Board.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one eighty-three relative to the acceptance...
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
One moment, please. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a resolution that was received after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one eighty-three relative to the acceptance of grant funds in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community service grant activities.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and to allow for a second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one eighty-three, and Madam President, may I be recognized after the vote for a subsequent motion?
You may. Motion is to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R dash twenty-three dash one eighty-three, and may I speak briefly? We heard from Director Bagley. This is a timely matter to get this up, and it sounds like to me, just like the House cleaning issue, to clean up the numbers and meet the adequacy for the state. So I urge your support for this. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I fully intend to support this. I had a question, but I felt it was better to wait than ask it during public comment. So I noticed they came in lower than what we were anticipating. So if I could ask a question through you to Director Bagley, is she making that up with her own budget, or will the just less money go to this programming?
Director Bagley?
Yes, Director Bagley for the Division of Public Health and Community Services. The money amount came in lower. Initially, the state thought they were going to get additional dollars from the CDC. The original amount, as you saw, was a million fifty-four thousand, and then they learned that the amount was going to be reduced. I don't have additional funds to make up for that shortfall, and there are some additional dollars that may come from other sources, but for right now, I don't have additional dollars to support the decrease in the amount of funding that will be coming from the state.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. So are you equally distributing it in terms of the less, or are there certain programs that are just completely gone?
No, all those programs will be provided. The amount of money that will be in the budgets will be a little bit less, and many of those grants that we have there, most of the services that are provided are provided by our public health nurses that are funded by the city, and so the services will be able to continue.
All right. Thank you very much.
I forgot to ask for additional sponsors on this, so I would like to do that now, and then I'll recognize Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Thank you. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. Could I ask Corporation Counsel a question through you?
You can.
So we already passed R twenty-three dash one-five-seven, and this is correcting that, but does one-five-seven just disappear automatically, or do we have to take any action to repeal that?
This resolution, R twenty-three one eighty-three explicitly repeals the former resolution, R twenty-three one fifty-seven. One, two, three. If you look down in the fourth paragraph where it says now therefore, the repeal is made explicit.
Oh, I see it now. Thank you very much. Thank you for answering the question.
Okay. Now, okay. Any further discussion? Will the clerk call? Oh, you don't need a roll call.
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and ordinance R twenty-three one eighty-three is duly adopted. New business ordinances.
First reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero-six-six increasing sewer use fees rates and charges.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero-six-seven no parking on the west side of a section of Elm Street.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Klee, Alderman Moran, Alderman Como, Alderman Senate. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero-six-eight authorizing traffic and parking changes on Water Street.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Como, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Engineering Department. Period for general public comment. We have one person signed up, Stephen Skare.
Good evening, Stephen Skare, one-eleven East Hobart Street. Just a quick comment, a quick suggestion, and then a question on something that may be a related matter. I heard the mayor at the debate explaining the homeless encampment and the reasons that it ended up going the way it did, and I have no reason to believe anyone was acting maliciously. It's just that, living in a republic, even in the city, I'd like to see public debate, discussions of important issues. I don't think any two people in this room would come up with the exact same response to a difficult situation like that, just that there should be some community input. Also, and excuse me if this is a foolish question, I'm in Ward Seven. Do I have a new Alderman?
You do.
Okay.
Alderman Tim, Senate.
Tim, okay. And how do I get contact information for you?
I just received my email activation today, but you can reach me at senateT@nashuanyamhshire.gov.
Okay. Was there going to be any sort of announcement of this change by the Board of Aldermen or the city?
At the last meeting.
It was at the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Remarks by members of the board, I'll start over here tonight. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. It's regretfully that I arise to speak on behalf of Lieutenant Jess Wyman. I had the pleasure of serving with her during my time, thirty-five years with Nashua Fire Rescue. Lieutenant Wyman came to Nashua Fire Rescue. She had in total twenty-six years of service in the Fire Department. She spent a total of sixteen years with us on the Fire Department, and prior to that, she worked sixteen years as a firefighter paramedic for the town of Merrimack. She also had a very lengthy career as a nurse at Southern New Hampshire Health. She worked in the emergency department, and I can just imagine how many hands that she laid upon to cure. She was really quite a gal. And she rose within that rank, this is, of course, after the Fire Department, to become Executive Director of Inpatient and Critical Care Services. And I had the honor of working with Lieutenant Wyman because of her other project that she had, Camp Fully Involved. And what Camp Fully Involved is, is a camp for young women who want to seek a career into the fire service. And if not into the fire service, they can also seek a career into leadership and learn that they can conquer. Now, I worked with a lot of people, you know. Some firemen are better than other firemen, but Jess, believe me, Lieutenant Jess was one of the best. She could prove herself, she managed her company well, and she was a direct asset. Although unfortunately, I would have liked to have more assigned to me on Group One, but we did have occasion on a number of times of being fighting fires together and watching her develop within her career. She gave so much. And to us firefighters, I really want to stipulate, this is as much to us as having a building fallen upon you or some other tragedy. This is an occupational line of duty death. This is something. She gave it all, and she should be recognized, and she will be fondly remembered by her brothers and sisters of Nashua Fire Rescue. Godspeed, Lieutenant Wyman. Thank you.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'd like to thank Myra Nikitas for coming and giving us that presentation. I know she'll be speaking to the Board of Ed again, and she does really good work. I'd also like to thank Mr. Larry Goodhue, who's been in charge of Penachuck for many years. He's going to be retiring at the end of this year. Our last meeting that we had was the last meeting he was going to be attending. He has been, as long as I've been on the Board of Aldermen, I've been on the Penachuck water. This year, this term, I had the privilege of chairing that committee, and working with him has been incredible. He's very patient when I ask him the same question over and over again, and I do it as much to re-educate myself each time as well as to educate the public as to Penachuck is a very unique enterprise for this city, and people think we own it and can do so on, and it's not quite as simple as that. And he's been very patient, he and his staff. There's, Mr. Bovair will be taking over in his stead, and he also is an incredible man to work with. But, and I too would like to give my condolences to Lieutenant Jessica Wyman's family, and when I say family, I don't just mean her blood family, but I mean her firefighter family as well. And I can say that as being a state rep, as well as my colleague to the left, Alderman and State Rep O'Brien, when we've been up in the State House, one of the things we tried to pass a lot was bills that helped firefighters with line of duty cancers and so on. There's so many carcinogens that they have to face, and I'm sure Alderman Gueva, who works with the Firefighters Union and is an advocate for them in Concord and does an admirable job, and I thank him for that. The issue is, I'm going to ask everybody who's listening to us to contact their state rep, contact their friends to get them to contact their state rep, and pass more legislation that helps our firefighters who have to face these carcinogens. It's not just the stuff that they're breathing in, they take it in through their skin. Our biggest organ is our skin, and they take these things in not just through their lungs but through their skin. We need to promote good firefighter clothing, and we need to also promote that these line of duty cancers are just that. They deserve workman's comp, they deserve everything that they can get, and we need to be their advocates. They've been here for us, and it's time for us to be there for them. So thank you, and condolences to the Wyman family, and I mean the firefighter family as well. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would echo the comments of my previous two speakers regarding Lieutenant Wyman. Very difficult line of duty loss, and from all aspects, it's not just running into a fire like Alderman O'Brien said, that you put your life on the line of carcinogens and all these other factors. And Alderman Klee is right, we need to advocate for more, support services, aftercare, whatever we can to support people who risk their lives in one of the most trusted civil servant positions in the country. And to Nashua Fire Rescue as well, condolences. Better news, I changed the subject slightly. The winter stroll was amazing. It was a very fun time. My kids had a blast as usual. I saw Alderman Timmons, I can't, she is everywhere. I turned around, and she was taking pictures, filming, great pictures on Facebook, but it looked like it was bigger than last year, a lot more vendors. Thanks to Paul Schaefer coming back and taking over last minute for three weeks prior to a giant event like that. But I think the community had a great time, there was a lot of excitement, a lot of positive atmosphere on Small Business Saturday, and definitely impacted the small businesses downtown for the betterment of Nashua. Second, thank you to all the city workers, the city clerk, all the volunteers that came out for the recount. I can't give any kudos to you guys. I'm sorry I missed it, I guess. But it was definitely something. I watched the video at home, and I would like to also congratulate future school board member Shawanda Williams, who's run a great campaign. But I also have to send my thanks to all the work that former school, whom to be former school board, Paula Johnson, has done for the city. We may disagree on many, many things, but she was duly elected in her capacity and many times throughout the city, and I'm sure we won't see the last of her, and I always look forward to her competitive races. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I wanted to acknowledge the great job that was done with the stroll. Pass on my appreciation to the organizing that Great American Downtown did, all the work that city staff did as well. I thought it was a great event, and I heard a lot of really, really good things evening of the event. I saw a lot of really good changes, and I think it was a great event overall. That morning also, we organized a decoration, I guess you could call it Work Day, at Delaina's house on Water Street and Factory Street, and it was a great opportunity to kind of separate the common area for the veterans that are staying there, make sure that they have the opportunity to participate, you know, at least with their windows. have the opportunity to participate, you know, at least with their window as proudly as some of the other storefronts do. And it's something we've done for many, many years. I note that Alderman Klee attended and volunteered on her birthday, so I was very appreciative of that, as well as Alderman Jettie. And it's a great opportunity to include veterans in the city, in their community, in their neighborhoods. So, much appreciated. It's the kickoff to other stuff too, where, for example, we'll be putting out boxes to collect holiday decorations. Now that we've decorated the floors, or the common areas, five floors to that building, which is too much for a decorating party to do, but the veterans themselves can do it and competitively do so. So, it'll be the kickoff to their floor wars, where each floor will compete and decorate as well as they're able, and then it'll culminate in a Christmas party where the different floors are going to be judged and prizes are awarded, and the public is welcome to contribute or donate to any of that as well, gift cards, that kind of stuff. It's a great way of celebrating the holidays, as I said, including everyone and recognizing those who served our country as essential parts of our community. And then finally, I just wanted to make a comment legislatively regarding some of the ordinances that have been proposed tonight. I was approached regarding the changing the parking on the west side of Elm Street by city staff. They gave me a heads up about it as the ward Alderman. They kind of reviewed the basics of it, asked for me to sponsor it, and it makes sense. They kind of educated me a little bit about how there needs to be a turning radius and some minor cosmetic adjustments to that area would allow for a better traffic flow pattern. I was not approached about O-23-068, and in reviewing it, I can see why. They would probably anticipate that I would have a lot of concerns as the ward Alderman as to how it would affect those same veterans that we were just working with, clock tower, the neighborhood, the flow of traffic downtown. So, this is coming in late in the legislative year and over the holiday season. I'm certain, since it's going to the Committee on Infrastructure, that Alderman O'Brien will entertain a robust discussion if needed, there will be presentations and education. So, I don't want to prematurely judge the ordinance, but there is a difference when you engage the ward Alderman and invite him to be part of the process versus just presenting it and letting the chips kind of fall where they are. So, I look forward to learning more about what is proposed and what the needs are, and hopefully hearing from the community as to how they view those needs as well. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So, I first wanted to congratulate Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Timmons for agreeing to sponsor Resolution, or, excuse me, Ordinance O-66, increasing the sewer use rates and charges. I noticed there weren't a whole lot of us raising their hands for that one, but, you know, I'm sure it's, I'm sure we're going to, as we heard from the discussion the other night, you know, these are probably very, very much needed, and I'll look forward to hearing more about it, but I recognize their courage in stepping forward.
I just want everything to flush appropriately. I'll pay anything.
I also wanted to recognize and congratulate the administration and the departments for, I've noticed that we've purchased some hybrid vehicles and some EVs, some electric vehicles, including a pickup truck, and I congratulate the administration in following through on its announced goal to get us away as much as, get us away from as much as possible the burning of fossil fuels. And thank you very much for pursuing that. Lastly, I just want to let every, let Ward 5 residents know that there'll be a Ward 5 meeting with the Nashville Police Department, at the Nashville Police Department, on December 20th at 6:00 PM. So, you're invited to come and talk, let the police know, you know, what your, ask them questions, and let them know what your concerns are about policing in Ward 5. I've heard a lot of complaints about West Hollis Street, so this is your opportunity to come and let the police know, you know, what you've observed, and give them a chance to respond to your concerns. So, thank you.
On this side? Alderman Dowd.
Hey, just real quick. I, over the years, have met Lieutenant Wyman a number of times and saw her fighting fires over the course of many years, and I just want to extend my condolences to her immediate family and extended family. I don't think oftentimes that people understand just how dangerous it is to be a firefighter, and as we found in 9/11, they're the ones that run into the fire, not out of it, and they save a lot of lives and save a lot of property, and they put themselves at severe risk. So, just want to congratulate them for all their work. The other thing is, I want to give a shout out to Paul Shay, who is back and taking over the GAD, and did a phenomenal job in pulling together the stroll, a lot of, some of the work had been done before, but I think he made sure it ran smoothly and flawlessly, and I do know that he put a lot of time and effort into it. And the other thing is, now that the election season is over, we had a lot of negative things being thrown around during the election, and I hope now that the election's over and people are ready to assume their roles, new roles, old roles, that we now just come together as a city and function as one entity.
Alderman Bovier.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the condolences to Lieutenant Wyman's family. It's occupational cancer in the fire services, it's brutal, and I mean, being in the fire services, having a 9% higher risk of getting cancer when you contracted, a 14% higher risk of dying from it is a risk they all take every day going to any given call, and this is all over time too. This isn't one particular instance, this is over the span of a career, and that needs to change, and there needs to be action at the state level, and I think there's a lot of positive things coming in this upcoming session. I know my colleague across the chamber has been very helpful with some of this legislation, and I hope we can start to change the culture a little bit and really bring these cancer death rates down, because it is, it's absolutely plaguing the fire service industry right now, and it's just awful. Thank you.
Alderman Senet.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to extend my condolences to the family of Lieutenant Wyman. This sort of occupational hazard that carries with firefighters long after they've left the service is something that has touched the family that I married into, and I know that that loss is never lost on them. They never quite forget the sacrifice that their family member made and what took them from them too early. So, we certainly share in the Wyman family's pain. On happier notes, I would like to also share in the recognition of Paul Shay and another individual who hasn't been named, but also shared in the lion's share of that work, and that's the president of Great American Downtown, Tommy Parnell. Tommy and Paul have lost many, many hours of sleep over the last couple of weeks trying to make this all come together on short notice, and everybody that I was with on the stroll that night seems to agree that they pulled off the impossible. And finally, like my colleague Alderman Moran, I was unable to attend the festivities of the recount last weekend, but I want to extend my thanks to everybody that did spend their entire Saturday here. I've participated in one of those recounts before as a counter, and it's a lot of tedious, detail-oriented work, and so I'm grateful for everybody that came out to bolster the fact that our elections are strong, and I appreciate their work. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, that was a painfully long day, as someone just basically sitting there for most of it. But I will say to everybody out there that you can watch democracy, right? That's people sitting there counting votes. I mean, that's what we, you know, we look towards, people can come and watch it, and it's public, and, you know, it actually flipped, which that doesn't often happen. So, it was very interesting to see that all play out and how it works. So, thank you to Clark Healy and everybody that participated. It was quite the day. I have a few things, so, one, not speaking out of turn here, but poor Alderman Moran got to the stroll a little bit early and had to spend a little extra money to smooth out his family's being there over an hour early.
Two hours early.
Two hours.
Completely misread.
So, I appreciate him and his kids sticking it out to at least get up the street.
And we appreciate you and Alderman Dowd babysitting us.
Babysitting. And so, thank you to that. Also, I want to thank Michael Appleberg and United Way for their radio telethon this weekend. A few of us were on it, and they do great work, and I really want to thank them for poor Michael staying up, you know, whatever it was, 24 hours or whatnot to get through that. Luckily, I got a good time this year. And then, you know, again, condolences to Lieutenant Wyman and the family. I have two firemen in my family, uncles, one in Wyoming and one in New Hampshire, both retired, and, you know, although luckily, knock on wood, they don't have those kind of issues, but they certainly, you know, have the injuries of risk when you're a fireman and all the different things you have to do. So, you know, it's a risky job, and it's tough, and I salute everybody that does that job. It's not easy, and, you know, I really appreciate our fire department, and I think we do a great job here, and again, condolences to that. And the last thing I want to bring up is another condolences, and if anybody knew Franny, and I know the fire department did, and if you lived in Nashville long enough, you knew Franny. Growing up, a couple of years on Chestnut Street behind the fire station, Franny would walk down that street and down Elm Street going, Dana did it, because that was my brother's name, or Derek did it, and I always wondered what I did, and as a 10-year-old, you don't know what's going on when he did that, but he was a mainstay of that area, and unfortunately, he passed away a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to mention it and had forgotten to. And I know I saw his last name in the paper, but I just knew him as Franny. He's like Cher or Madonna, or he goes by one name. So, to his family, condolences, and, you know, I smile because, you know, he was that fixture, everybody knew who he was, and I know Alderman O'Brien knew very well who he was, so.
Oh, yes.
So, I just wanted to put that out there, so.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I like to say that Nashua does a lot for our community, and I'm out there all the time so I see what they do, and we don't give Nashua, the city itself, enough credit. So, let me go back to the Halloween bash. We had the Halloween bash. After Halloween bash, we had the senior outing. At the senior outing, we didn't leave the homeless out. We had the Thanksgiving dinner, and the whole federal delegation in New Hampshire, including the mayor, was at that Thanksgiving Day meal. It was fantastic. It was hundreds of people that came out for a Thanksgiving meal. Then we had the holiday stroll, and a lot of my colleagues around the shield was there. So, this city does a lot for our citizens, and we should applaud what they do. And I came from Hartford, Connecticut, and I did not do half as much there. That city is much larger than this one, as I did here, and my kids are doing here, and my grandkids are doing here. So, I applaud the city of Nashua. I sung with Dan Healy, I don't know if he was singing, but he looked at me and said, he was singing, okay. He was there right along with me, my colleague over there, Moran, and Lopez, and of course you. It's a great city to live and work and play, and I just can't see anything negative, and I refuse to have any negativity in this chamber or in this city. It's a great city to live, and I swear, if you don't like it, go to Hartford, Connecticut, and then come back here and tell me you like it here better. So, I just want to know that this city is really good. We take care of all our citizens, you know, from the top to the bottom. We take care of everyone, and we treat them equally. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Great. I'd like to thank the city clerk for the, all the work on the recount, getting all the volunteers in there. It was a long, tedious day, but it was a good day overall. And congratulations to school board member-elect Shawanda Daniels-Williams. Also like to wish Larry Goodhue well on his retirement from Penachuck. He was a great CEO there, and he will be missed. And Franny, Franny was a mainstay. I grew up in Nashua, and I knew Franny my whole life. He was, you know, he was a good guy. He never, you know, he wasn't harmful. He'd just walk up and down Main Street and say hi to everybody, just a good guy. So, my condolences to Franny's family. I don't know his last name.
Whitford.
What is it?
Whitford.
Whitford?
Yeah.
Never knew. He was just Franny.
Oh, he did. Actually, I think he was the third.
Oh, okay.
Second or third.
My condolences also to the family of Lieutenant Wyman. That's quite a job and quite a career she had, and my condolences to her family, friends, and extended family. Welcome back to Great American Downtown to Paul Shay. I did not attend the stroll, but I did see a lot of pictures, and it looked like it was very well attended. That's all I have. Committee announcements. Start over here. Alderman Moran.
Tomorrow night here in the automatic chamber at 7:00 PM, PEDC will be meeting for public hearing regarding, we'll continue to call them the Jettie Amendments, regarding changes to, changes to notifying the public for certain planning purposes. I look forward to seeing everyone there.
Other committee announcements? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion that the November 28, 2023 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:37 PM. Thank you, everyone.